Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we are back in session. Council Bill 23-0381, Orders of Bestimements for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined to my right by Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District; to my left, Council President Nick Mosby; Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Vice Chair of the Committee; Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District; Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Z. Cohen, 1st District. Also joined to my immediate right by Marguerite Kern, Staff to the Committee; and we also have staff present with us from Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's offices, respectively. We are here for Office of the Inspector General. It is now 11:04 a.m. We have until 12:00 p.m. We have a lunch break, and then we'll be reconvening at 12:30 p.m. for Department of Human Resources and the Office of the Labor Commissioner. Before we get started, a couple ground rules. You have these new audio technology devices in front of you. The button on the right, if you click that, this thing light up red, and the button light up red. That needs to be on in order to speak, so when you're speaking, please make sure you press the button first. When you have finished speaking, please be sure to turn the button off. These mics are very sensitive. They will catch everything, including but not limited to your breathing, so the folks at home won't be able to enjoy this opportunity to spend Hour Number 32 with us during budget hearings over a three-day period. Also, before we begin, as I'm mentioning to agencies, this is a conversation between the agency and the City Council. We're asking that you not address the public, the media, or citizens of Baltimore. This should be directed to the Chair and the Committee and the Council. Madam Inspector General, you have two slides this year?
No. I have four.
Okay. You have as much time as you need for your presentation. One other thing before we—well, two things. One, when we turn it over to you, if you could please introduce everyone that's with you, full name and position title. I know that we also have Gail Guilford, 11th District Resident, who is the Chair of the OIG Advisory Board. Ms. Guilford sent two letters last evening. Colleagues, I disseminated those late last evening. One of those letters was related to an enhancement request. The other was related to the bifurcation of service within the Office of the Inspector General. I've shared those with everyone on the Committee, including the original enhancement request from OIG, which was submitted to BBMR. That's a couple pages long. That's the PDF. The other two are Word documents. I've also shared that with BBMR. I spoke with Budget Director Laura Larson last evening. I know we have our Deputy Director here with us today because Budget Director Larson spent about 14 hours with us yesterday, so she needed a quick breather. But Deputy Director Mara James is with us, and I've asked her last evening to be prepared to discuss those two issues in a way that the Council can proceed on those. So with that, what I'm going to do, I'm going to turn it over to the IG, run through the slide deck. I'm then going to turn it over to Ms. Guilford to briefly discuss the two letters that were sent, based off of the discussions that your Advisory Board has had. I'm going to ask Deputy Director James to address our discussions around those two recommendations, which we're very grateful for, and then we'll jump into questions from the Committee. Colleagues, any questions on the format before we begin? Thank you very much. Madam IG, if you could, full name and position title for all your senior folks that are going to be testifying, and then jump into your slide deck. Please and thank you.
Thank you very much for that opening. Good morning, Chairman Costello, Honorable Committee, and esteemed guests. The Office of the Inspector General is firm in its commitment in investigating allegations of waste, fraud, and abuse perpetrated by employees, elected officials, or contractors of Baltimore City. This includes violators of criminal law, civil statutes, regulations, ethical laws, and standards of conduct. The OIG then provides comprehensive reports to the agency heads and also to the citizens when allowed to by law. I'm joined today with my deputy, Yvonne Brooks. Following an overwhelming 86% victory for Question I in November, the OIG has a new citizen-based Advisory Board. Today, we're honored to have two esteemed members of this Board present, the distinguished Chairperson Gail Guilford, a former Linsky Award winner, and the accomplished CPA Jim Godey. The highlights for Fiscal Year '23 include the numerous investigative reports the OIG completed, which included Finance, Monzy, Health, DOT, and other agencies, including both the Baltimore City Police and Fire Department. These reports and management alerts can be read online. Whistleblower rights and ethics programs continue to impact the OIG. There were three confidential whistleblower investigations by the OIG this year. In ethics, the achievement include conducting the first ethical court proceeding in history, advising numerous elected officials on ethical concerns, receiving over 3,000 financial disclosure forms, investigating over 13 ethical complaints, finding lobbyists who failed to file forms, and answering over 1,000 resolved help desk requests for just this year. Now, the OIG has three performance measures. The first is effectiveness, which is the number of criminal, civil, or administrative actions. For Fiscal Year '22, the OIG completed 114 actionable items with a goal of 100. For Fiscal Year '23, the OIG has already completed 102, with four weeks left in the fiscal year. The next metric is outcome, which is known as identifiable savings or waste, the amount of money wasted or saved as a result of an investigation. For Fiscal Year '23, the OIG has identified $6,927,62.73 of monies that fall into the category as a direct result of OIG investigations. The OIG hopes that identifying wastes and saves encourages better fiscal management through legislation and updated policies, procedures. During each of the OIG investigations, any financial issues identified can fall into the category of waste or savings. The metric is contingent upon cases the OIG receives, and although the OIG has been very successful in this metric, it should not be considered the most important. This is demonstrated by the fact that ethical investigations may not have a dollar value, but the value of effective ethics program and ethical workers is immeasurable, as that is the basis of good government. For this year, as every year that I have served, the OIG team has met and surpassed its target of identifiable savings and waste. Finally, the output metric, which is the number of outreach activities. The OIG is committed to increasing awareness as to who we are and what we do. Awareness greatly impacts the number of complaints. The OIG greets employees virtually every month for new employee orientation, setting a foundation to work with integrity and ethics. I stress the importance of reporting fraud, waste, and abuse. The OIG furthers awareness by maintaining an active social media on Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, as well as outreach programs with all the local news programs, both radio and television, and town halls for outreach. Now, we're all here for the budget. The OIG budget is 91% dedicated to salaries and personnel costs, with the OIG holding 18 funded positions. The OIG has no vacancies. The information about two vacancies is incorrect. The challenge for the OIG is being able to address all investigations in a timely manner with qualified investigators. Each of my agents carries two to four active cases. The Office currently has over 25 active cases. For the second year in a row, the OIG is saving monies utilizing our own employees for outreach materials, such as our annual report, the Ethics Board Annual Report, as well as training videos and presentations. When the Advisory Board met in March, they unanimously found that the OIG's Fiscal Year '24 budget proposal, as recommended by BBMR in February, does provide sufficient funding to meet the duties of the Office. However, the OIG's original budget proposed to BBMR in December included a one-time enhancement in support of the Ethics Board, which was not approved for the second year in a row. Now we stand before this esteemed Committee, presenting the very same budget that has garnered the Board's unanimous approval, in addition to the OIG's enhancement request of that enhancement for ethics. A letter was sent to all of you by our Board Chairman yesterday, and the amount is $350,000 with an ongoing support of 50 to 60 a year. To put that amount of $350,000 in perspective, it represents less than .01 of 1% of this city's $4 billion budget. The proposed enhancement seeks to streamline the process for over 3,000 city employees who are required to complete financial disclosure forms and lobbying registrations. By implementing a new online reporting platform, we aim to alleviate the burden placed on the Ethics Officer, who currently receives overwhelming number of complaints and inquiries each year from all of us, with minimal impact on the city budget and with last year's budget request being declined. This year represents an opportunity, an opportunity for this Council to demonstrate its support for accountability and ethics within our city government. Allocating this one-time allocation of $350,000 along with the ongoing support would directly enhance the efficiency of form completion for city employees, including every member of this esteemed body. We respectfully request this Committee to allocate funds from elsewhere within the $4 billion budget to recognize the significance of this tool in fostering accountability and transparency. We do hope in the future that ethics will have its own service number. That was the other letter you received. By investing in this important initiative, we demonstrate our unwavering commitment to uphold ethical standards and facilitating a more streamlined, transparent process for all employees and the public involved. The impact of this allocation would extend beyond mere convenience, positively affecting the overall integrity of our city government. Transparency, accountability, and ethics are pillars of our good governance, and we hope this honorable body will join with our citizen-based Advisory Board to support this important request. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Guilford. Do you want to discuss the two letters at all?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for this time. The Board met and reviewed the budget, but we also had to submit the financial disclosure forms via the existing system, which gave each member a realistic understanding of the positives and the negatives of the existing system. As the letter states, we need to enhance the online reporting for two reasons. One, for the 3,000 employees and appointed officials; and secondly, for the lobbyists in order to continue to provide transparency, efficiencies, and maintain the ethics required by the Baltimore City Charter and the public. We also need a means for the public to review certain information about the lobbyists and your people who do fill out financial disclosure forms. So as a result of that, the Board unanimously is requesting that this enhancement be put back in the budget and implemented, or purchased, implemented, and used so that in the coming year, everybody will have a better means of reporting their financial disclosure. Any questions? I'm sure you all have used the system.
We have, several times. Ms. Guilford, I want to thank you for stepping up to serve in this role after an extremely distinguished career in Baltimore City Government, and I'm certain that the noises that you heard are probably a reminder of how much you enjoyed testifying in front of the City Council over the years. Deputy Director James, if you could please address the two recommendations from the Advisory Board?
Certainly. So first, on the creation of a new service for ethics. We are currently at a point in the process where it is a little—it's too late to make that adjustment in the budget. However, during the budget proposal process, agencies are able to request new services and new activities, and we—due to the timing of this request, we aren't able to meet that now, but we would be happy to work with OIG during the 25 planning process to split out ethics and OIG in that way. So that is—can easily be accommodated. In terms of the enhancement request, so this year, as a part of the budget planning process, we received 49 enhancement requests for a total amount of $31.6 million from agencies across the city. We worked with three results teams to review these requests. I will note that, at the end of the day, the results teams made recommendations for 21 of those requests to be funded for about $11 million. However, when we worked with these results teams on this process, that was before we had the updated numbers around Kerwin funding required, and so we had to limit the actual funding recommendations that were received. So we received 21 recommendations for funding from results teams. Of those, only three received funding in this, and not even full funding, but partial funding. The results team did not recommend this request as a part of that—those 21 requests to fund initially. We do have feedback that we'll be distributing to agencies. We've been finalizing those memos with feedback from the results teams on areas for improvement for those requests, for future budget processes that they would recommend to be able to advance those recommendations next time.
Thank you. We'll now jump into agency questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions at this time.
Thank you. Vice Chair Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know your current Board members. Do you have a listing of them? What is their term? And what are the new Board members, and who they are, and what is their terms also?
Yes. All of that is available. I think it's on the website, but I know we're working on it because they had their first meeting, which was on Charm City TV about a month ago. Their term was set by this group when you put the motion in. People have either three- or two-year terms. There'll be—there's a total of 11 people on the Board, two of whom are the Deans of the two law schools. Those two will not have terms because it's not them—it's whoever's in that position. So the rest of the people either have three-year terms or two-year terms. They represent—seven of them represent the 14 districts. The names were brought forth by the Council people, and then they were selected by—so it was set up—because it's all—two—like, for one and two were put together, two and three—no, one and two were put together, three and four were put together, and then the Chairman of the Board of Ethics selected the name randomly from the hat who it was going to be. So we have—we actually have—in addition, there's one person who is a CPA. That happens to be Mr. Godey. And then there's one person who is a certified fraud examiner, and that's another person. And so it ended up a very richly diverse Board that—it's—and all their meetings will be available for the public to watch. It ended up being pretty amazing, and we're very grateful.
Mr. Chair, can I just get a request so we can share that with our constituents?
Sure.
And can any of the members be reappointed to those positions, and how do that work?
Yes, they can. They're allowed to stay two terms, according to the law.
And those two terms are two years?
No. It could be—it could be six years if they're on a three-year term.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's office, CP's office, we got that. That's a request, a list of the roster for the OIG Advisory Board. Please and thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
I think it would come from our office, because it's not part of the mayor. The mayor doesn't pick it at all.
No. Yes, it would come from your office, but the reason I addressed it to the Mayor's office and the Council President's office is because they're duly tracking all of the requests for documentation, so they'll be responsible for coordinating directly with your office to retrieve that information and then upload it for us.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, we're hearing the great need for this new software to be able to make the disclosure forms more user-friendly for us to fill in, but also—it sounds like also for the public to look up various—you know, because it's kind of hard to do that now. So am I right about that? It would just make it a lot easier for full disclosure to the public.
You're very correct. That is an important part of this. It's about the transparency, because we have a lot of citizens call us if they have trouble with the platform that it's on right now. So it is transparency.
So the questions that you get aren't from those of us filling up the form—or they are.
Oh, it is.
But there's also people calling because they want to look at some—they want to look at our forms, which they're allowed to do.
Yes.
And are having trouble with the technology.
Yes.
Gotcha. Mm-hmm. Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I just think that it's an important expenditure, that we've got to figure out where to move the money or take it from, or, you know, negotiate. Hopefully, we don't have to wait till next year, but to just try to figure out, you know, what would make sense. And so—I'm just curious, have you thought about maybe where we could move it from?
Of course I've thought about it. I know that—I like to think of ethics as executive protection for the city of Baltimore, and I do know that the executive protection line item is going to be dropping in the future because of conversations I've had with some elected officials. So I think that would be an area that it could be taken from.
Okay.
It should be dropping by at least half a million.
Oh, okay. Well, that's something that I'd be willing to explore, and I appreciate you thinking it through as well. So thank you again for all you're doing. I'm super excited about the new Board. I obviously want to thank my colleagues for voting for the resolution, and then, of course, the public for voting the Charter Amendment. I think that it certainly makes the—I think we're on the right track, I think, with the Board, and so I'm really excited about the opportunities that this brings.
We're grateful to you, because without you, this Board wouldn't have happened. So thank you.
The whole Council was behind you, so, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. Councilwoman Porter, floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the work that you all are doing in the OIG office. I did have a quick question about just reporting to the Council on maybe a six-month or just a yearly basis, just to kind of see what the OIG is doing, some initiatives that they are working on, and then also just for the general public, so that they understand how to submit those type of issues to the OIG. Would you all be interested in something like that?
We'll be happy to do that. I want you to know that with the new law that went—with the Advisory Board, they actually—it's in there that they are supposed to meet with the Council once a year.
Perfect.
So we can—we're happy to schedule that.
Okay, perfect. And I was—so I'm aware that the Advisory Board comes before the Council, but I mean, as far as the OIG Office itself proper, come before the Council.
We'll be happy to.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen, and then Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Inspector General. Thank you to your team. Thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Ramos, Councilman Dorsey, who have fought for this office, as well as everyone for supporting it. I read somewhere that you all had saved approximately $6.9 million from waste, fraud, and abuse that was identified for the city, and I think it's worth stating that number because $6.9 million compared to the relatively small enhancement that you all are asking for, I think makes total sense. We should do everything in our power to improve this Office and make sure it is as modernized and as efficient and effective as is humanly possible. And so I appreciate your leadership and your Board as well. I'm particularly interested in disclosures around lobbyists. In 2018, I sponsored, and the Council passed, the Transparency in Lobbying Act, really with the idea that advocates, lobbyists, have a role in our civic ecosystem, but that we, the public, journalists, and others deserve to know who they're being paid to advocate to, and to just have some sunlight and sunshine in those meetings. And I'm interested particularly in thinking about this enhancement. I have find the forms to be confusing, and so I'm curious what getting this software would do specifically to make it more accessible for the public, for journalists, for other folks who want to know what's happening behind the scenes at City Hall.
Thank you, members of the Committee. I'm Yvonne Brooks, and I'll try to answer that question for you. I did work with the Ethics Officer and the Executive Director in coming up with this enhancement proposal, and working with them, we identified where the issues were. So essentially, what's happening now, it's really kind of a patch, a Band-Aid, that BISIT has come up with as a solution. It's not very long-term. And what's going on now, if we get a system—we've done the research, we looked at other cities and jurisdictions who use an Ethics Board, has financial disclosures, looking at those systems to update and modernize. Because currently, even with this, what we call a stopgap or Band-Aid, there are still issues. I believe even now, you still cannot view the lobbying—lobbyist activity reports. We did fix—BISIT was able to fix lobbyists being able to amend their forms, but hasn't—we haven't fixed this. So it would take an overhaul, because right now, what we're doing and what we're doing with BISIT is just putting in small fixes. So whatever gets broken, we'll call BISIT, and we'll go and fix that little part without looking at the whole part of it. So with this new system, it should enable everything that we want it to. If we can go in there and amend our financial disclosures, pull data in from the prior years without any errors in that data—I believe that—we mentioned that in the proposal, that that has occurred. Some data shifting has occurred between two different filers. Even though BISIT can manually correct that, it's still unknown where that error came from or how to fix it. So we're hoping that what we've done is really not ask for anything. We shifted some money around in our own OIG operating budget of what we needed in certain places, so that we could ask for this funding for this online software platform for the Ethics Board.
Great. No, I do appreciate that, and, you know, unfortunately, we still hear a fair amount of a sentiment that there is too much opaqueness in City Hall, and that folks still don't have enough clear understanding of what's happening behind the scenes. And so, to me, this makes perfect sense. This is what a modern, forward-thinking city government should be doing. And again, I appreciate the work that's gone into it, and I also think clarity is good for lobbyists as well. They need to have a system that works. They need to know where they're supposed to report, and then their reports are going to be public. And so I think, again, for a relatively nominal amount of money, it makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again to the team.
And if I just could add just one more thing. I think more importantly, what we're trying to do is comply with the law.
Yeah.
In this way, and this is their only solution that we can think of outside of the small fixes that BISIT is able to help us with. But thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you for joining us, you and your team. The—I know typically, we've—in previous years, we've had discussions about capacity of the Office to manage the number of complaints. I was trying to piece together some of that in the budget book, but I didn't really see where—like, how many complaints you're getting year over year, so it was hard to really put together a clear picture of like, how are you closing out reports within a certain period of time? And so just—the first thing I would say is just it would be helpful for us to have those metrics to see just how efficiently you're working through complaints as they come in, and getting the reports out within, I guess, whatever period of time, I guess, could be appropriate, given the detailed nature of the—
I guess, could be appropriate, given the detailed nature of the investigation. So I can imagine some of them, you're probably knocking out pretty quickly, and others probably take a long time. But I think that data would help us understand, you know, is this appropriate staffing levels? Is there a need for more staff? You know, given the, you know, where we started from in the beginning, where this office wasn't particularly robust in its investigations, and a lot of people didn't know about it, to a place where you are now, which I think is a good thing, where it is widely known that the office exists, and you probably get a lot more complaints than you did a few years ago. And so I guess, lack, one, my first would just be a recommendation to put that information into the budget books, so that the council and the public can see how efficiently things are working. But I guess the question I would have is, without, absent of that information, are you able to effectively carry out the investigations that you have with the team that you have, or is there a need for additional capacity in future years?
Great question. It used, you're absolutely correct. It used to be in the budget books. When I first, when we first started, the team had 70 complaints a year. This year, we're going to have over 1,000. So, yeah, we've grown. And that's just in a little more than five years. So that's complete absolute respect to my team. They're the ones that make it happen and continue on. We do get a tremendous amount of calls, and we do respond if they leave their name to each person. We have a staff member that is 100%, that is their job, to manage the hotline, as well as one of my Assistant Inspector Generals of Investigation. He is in charge of the hotline and just maintaining the referrals that we do, the, all of the, what it takes to keep those, keep things answering. When people reach out to us, even if it's not something that has to do with us, because if we get things involving social security, we get things involving a state organization, we refer them to where they have to go. Because many people, and so what happens is, they keep calling back, because we actually do respond, and we'll tell you where you go, and we'll reach out to other Office of Inspector General. And I think that has made a tremendous amount of people responding. We also try very much to get out the hotline information, and those numbers have continued every year to go up. They actually told us not to include that, those numbers. So I mean, I'm happy to put them back in, if you think that would help. Last year, we were at 720 hotline, this year, we're over, we're going to be over 1,000. Yeah.
Yeah. My opinion, and I can't speak for everyone on the council, but I think it would be, it would be helpful for me in determining where things are, how many, you know, just to kind of get a snapshot of like, the volume that's coming in. I mean, obviously, I know, just anecdotally, that there are a number of complaints, founded or unfounded, that come through to you all. But I think the volume would be useful information to better gauge, like where things are, the efficiency of the work, so.
The second part of your comment dealt with my current staffing. With that type of response from the public, we could always use additional staff. However, we didn't ask for it this year because of the situation involving the budget. And we, being the watch, the people that watch over, we have to respect the reality of what we're given. So that's why we try very hard to work within the parameters that we have. And we really do cut back on everything. However, that I say, I do strongly believe this ethics is just paramount to our city, and paramount to the public's awareness, and just making sure people know that it matters. So that's why, you know, we are asking for this. I didn't ask for any more.
Okay.
In fact, my budget, actually, if you look at it, it went down. It went from 2.3 to 2.2. So I'm not asking for, I'm just asking that the ethics be the focus.
Okay. And yeah, I would just lift up that, you know, to your point about the referrals. I had a staff member that reached out and with an issue that turned out to be a little bit higher level, and the referral process was seamless. So just wanted to thank you publicly for that, and to your team for that as well, to just sort of not letting the buck stop with, we don't do that, here's a number. But that transition was helpful for us. So, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, I want to take a brief moment to introduce a very special guest. We have Colonel Todd E. Randolph, known as Randy, commander with the United States Air Force, based out of Joint Base Andrews, who's one of the highest-ranking black officers in the United States Air Force. Just as important, he's one of Baltimore City's very own. Colonel, thank you so much for being here with us today, and thank you for your service. I know you had important business to discuss with the president, and not sit in hour number 33 of budget hearings, so we'll let you go. Dismissed. Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate you. Colleagues, any other questions? Thank you. We are now in recess. As a reminder, we have a lunch break at 12:00 noon. We'll be reconvening at 12:30 PM sharply for Department of Human Resources and the Office of the Labor Commissioner. Thank you.